Regular meeting of Desires City Council for May the 16th, 2017 is called to order. Please stand and join me in a pleasurable ages, remove your hats, turn off your cellphones, and would you please remain standing for a few moments?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to take just a moment of silence here to recognize Ralph Grubel, who was a police officer in the city of Desires for thirty-four years and he passed away this past weekend. May he rest in peace. Okay, first order of business this evening, we have something special to do. We have a new council member that needs to be sworn in. And the mayor is not paying any attention to you.
I was logging in.
Could step up this way, Mr. Ross? Yeah, I think you're all aware here that Mrs. Sherrick had to leave council for personal reasons and so we followed the process as set forth by the Ohio revise code. And Mr. Ross was the person that was nominated by the Democratic Committee for the city of Desires. So that's why he is being sworn in this evening. So you gotta move that way and I gotta move this way.
Well, first of all, congratulations, I've known you a long time. I know we were neighbors growing up.
We're not that tall.
Yeah, yeah, at least we are, so I congratulate you.
Show out in the room.
Show out there against Arch Travis and great football games too.
Yes.
Are you ready to get sworn in?
I'm very much ready, just like coming back home.
All right, good. Would you read here, repeat after me? I, Daniel F. Ross.
I, Daniel F. Ross.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
I will faithfully, honestly, and partially.
Discharge the duties of a councilperson.
Discharge the duties of a councilperson.
For the city of Desires.
For the city of Desires.
And the county of Crawford.
The county of Crawford.
And state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my term in office.
During my term in office.
Okay, you're in.
Thank you.
Dan, the seat right over here.
I can't keep it there, but this was, this is here right here.
Who's humming?
Mayor's phone.
Mayor's phone?
No, it's something.
Mayor's phone.
Thank you.
We'll get copies too in then.
Okay, we'll get a few copies.
Hey, Mr. Ross, is there anything you'd like to say to everyone before we get started this evening?
Dan?
Is there anything you'd like to say this evening before we get started?
Oh, like I told a couple people, it's like coming back home. I've been there before, you know, somewhere in different seats back here or wherever, you know, so. So different uniforms or whatever, but I just enjoy working for the community and I hope we can have some more successful times together and make things better in the community. So I'm ready.
Okay, thank you very much. Roll call, please.
McKiever.
Here.
Ross. Wireball.
There.
Trucca.
There.
Sack.
Here.
O'Rourke.
Here.
Piper.
There.
Okay, before you, you have the meetings from the May 2nd, 2017 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Mr. Trucca, to accept the minutes from the May 2nd, 2017 regular meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. I forgot to mention, we are not broadcast this evening, we're being filmed. Spectrum has changed equipment out on us and they haven't gotten us the latest, greatest equipment for us to be able to operate, so that will be forthcoming. This is the time where we grant permission for visitors to speak. If anyone would like to address council this evening, now's the time to go to the podium as soon as we get them back over where it belongs. Your name and address, please?
Clay Warner, 510 North Sandusky Avenue. Before I get started, I want to publicly welcome Mr. Ross, City Council. Thank you for your fast service. I look forward to all the great things that you're gonna do for this community. Good evening. For the record, my name is Clay Warner. My brother Ben and I own the property located at 510 North Sandusky Avenue. This property is commonly referred to by most people as either Freddy's or Goody's. On Tuesday, March 7th, 2017, I stood before you and these very council chancellors and notified you all that Jeff Reeser and Rob Ratliff attempted to forcefully coerce me into selling this aforementioned property through threats of impending legal action. Since then, I have exercised my God-given rights and have extracted information about the activities of Reeser and Ratliff regarding this property. Now, for the sake of tidiness, I will present a very succinct timeline that only focuses on the actions taken to the property at 510 North Sandusky Avenue. Mr. Trucca was kind enough to pass out an informational packet and if you could, I would like to look at the timeline. Briefly go through this, that way everyone on City Council is apprised.
Excuse me, who, what's talking?
The law enforcement officer.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I'm gonna briefly go through this timeline so that everyone on City Council was apprised of all of the activities that were conducted by Mr. Reeser and Mr. Ratliff. On February 20th, 2017, Ratliff presented me with an offer by the property of Goody's. I've attached this as exhibit one in your informational packet. Mr. Ratliff, that offer was elusive. I did not hesitate to say no. Mr. Ratliff, I figured you were gonna say that and he immediately served me with a notice of intent to acquire by eminent domain, that's exhibit two. The only thing I didn't highlight in there is there toward about the third paragraph says you'll have ten days to accept the offer or Mr. Ratliff was going to sue me on behalf of the city. The following night, which was Tuesday night, at the regularly scheduled council meeting, Mr. Ratliff deliberately skips the law directive report. I thought that a notice of intent to acquire by eminent domain is kinda big news. Mr. Ratliff was unable to find another one through subs who can't call the record request, but he deliberately skips the law directive report. February 22nd, I file Ohio public record request to discover the determined valuation of my property. So where did Mr. Reeser, Mr. Ratliff, where did they come up with this $12,500? That's exhibit three in your informational packet. On March 2nd, 2017, Ms. Megan Murphy appraises the property for Mr. Ratliff and Mr. Reeser. If I'm looking at these dates right, on the 20th, Mr. Ratliff gave me an offer of $12,500, but it took him until March 2nd to substantiate that offer. I'm gonna let that sink in. After Mr. Ratliff and Mr. Reeser gave me an offer of their own property, almost two weeks later, he actually had it appraised to substantiate his little offer. On March 17th, I informed City Council on Tuesday night of Reeser and Ratliff's actions regarding this property, 510 North Sandusky Avenue. I talked to some of you right before then, the words "I'm shocked" was acted by several of you members. On March 9th, at the subcommittee meeting, City Council unanimously states that they are fundamentally against acquiring this property by eminent domain. Mr. Ratliff then ironically reverses his course and then states publicly that now he's against acquiring the property. Then on March 28th, my realtor, Monica Best, appraises the property of it. I've attached that as exhibit five, for your due and pleasure. In conclusion, as I stated at the subcommittee meeting held on the 9th of March, I'm not opposed to working with the city of Desires regarding the sale of this property, but the city leaders must refrain from reckless actions. As a taxpaying citizen, I cannot and I will not accept anything from the very best from our elected officials. I look forward to working with City Council in the near future. Again, I welcome Mr. Ross. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Mr. O'Rourke?
Mr. Carter, where's this Monica Best broker out of?
Home of Sandusky, Ohio.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I do, and no offense to you, please don't take any offense, but this happens a lot, people come up and come up and several of your statements are, can't be substantiated. If the law director deliberately skipped it or not, I don't know if we can prove that and I don't believe the complete City Council unanimously stated that we were opposed to it. I was personally, several other were, but we didn't take a vote on that or anything. And I understand you're upset, but when, if you wanna sell your property, then sell it. I don't know what the city or the mayor's doing to refrain you from doing that. I don't know if they talk nasty to you or threaten you or not, but I guess that's between you and them. But when you come up here and portray like it was a big mafia scheme or something, that they were trying to take your property, I don't think that's the case. And I think that's why we are here, the City Council, is to check imbalance, so I just.
Mayor Fay, is that what you're saying? Okay, your statement was that Rob didn't deliberately skip the law directive report? He skipped it, whether it was deliberate or indirect, he told SIS that he was not big present, so it was skipped.
It was skipped. So you was the fact, you was the fact. It was skipped.
One at a time, one at a time.
Yeah, I just don't like that, you know, and we catch a lot of heat, you know, through this whole, the thing with the outdoor dining, you know, we caught heat, people's caught heat, wanted to cop a lot of heat because of it. And it's, when someone comes up and makes statements and things that aren't totally true, then it offends me, so that's all I'm saying. Yeah, go ahead.
Anyone else?
I would like to answer as well. You have two more statements?
This is it, this is the last time, okay, and we're moving on.
That's fine. The second statement was the City Council did not unanimously, they were not unanimously opposed to the eminent domain. In fact, you are, Mr. Van Cauze records this, this is actually posted on the internet live, so take some time tonight and you'll see that each one of you said that we are opposed to taking this by eminent domain.
Thank you. Thank you, John, thanks for expressing your concern. I'm glad you guys come up, but, you know, I just don't like, and not just you, I'm not picking on you, I'm talking about the deal on the streets, you know, the drinking or, you know, sidewalk cafes and all that, you know, that's gotten me riled up in the past, that they come up and they say, you know, you don't want this and you don't want the city to move forward and all these things, but, you know, these people up here, they work hard and I know sometimes they wanna stay in their ground and I just, you know, I wanna stick up for them too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wireball.
Yeah.
Moving on, anyone else would like to address council this evening? No one? Communications and petitions, we have a letter from your Reeser.
A letter from the mayor addressed to City Council dated May 16th, today. Dear council members, I want to share some very good news with you. We received most excellent news yesterday from OPWC. The city has been awarded a $500,000 grant for use with interest cost during construction of our new water treatment plant. This will save us about $30,000 per year and about $600,000 in the course of twenty-year amortization of the loan. The good fortune that we have received before and during construction will save our end-water users over $10 million of the original estimate of the cost of the plant. This includes the grant just mentioned as well as lower than expected construction costs and favorable interest rates. It's hard to overestimate how beneficial this will be to our residents as we pay for the plant and for our industry as we work to retain it and attract new businesses to the area. Sincerely, Jeff Reeser, Mayor. I may need to accept the question.
Okay, I need a motion to accept and file that letter?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Ms. Sack. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed.
We also have a letter from the Tax Incentive Review Council dated May 10th to Desires City Council. The Crawford County Tax Incentive Review Council recently met to review the tax abatement agreements for your jurisdiction. This review was done in conjunction with the inordinate file of May 31, 2017, by the Enterprise Zone Manager and is for the period end of December 31, 2016. Enclosed, you will find the recommendations made by the Tax Incentive Review Council as required by the Ohio revise code section 5709.85. A legislative authority that receives from a Tax Incentive Review Council written recommendations shall within sixty days after receipt, hold a meeting and vote to accept, reject, or modify all or any portion of the recommendations. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Enterprise Zone Manager for your jurisdiction or me. Sincerely, Joe Holt, Chairman, Tax Incentive Review Council. We have the enclosures attached and that means to refer to the Economic Development Committee for legislation.
Okay, I need a motion to refer this to Economic Development. Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. O'Rourke, to refer this to the Economic Development Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. In motion, passed. In there, make sure that you read through this because they are, this is one of the few times that they've come up with a modification that they want to do to one of the tax abatements. And just as an FYI, the date in there, we found this on March the 31st, not May the 31st. Okay. That's it for communications, standing committee reports. Start with you, Mr. Trucca.
Desires City Council Joint Regular Committee met Thursday, May 4th, 2017 at 6:00 PM. Members Bruce Trucca, Mark McKiever, Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Steve Piper, and Bill O'Rourke. Members present were Bruce Trucca, Mark McKiever, Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Steve Piper, and Bill O'Rourke. Desires City Joint Regular Committee Meeting was called to order by Trucca at 6:00 PM. Public participation, Gordon Grove, City Code Enforcement Officer, provided an update on the activities of Desires Property Maintenance Office since it opened on February 15th, 2017. Operating twenty hours a week, he said property complaints have been received nearly every day since then. Complaint cards have been developed to cut down on time researching properties. So far, fifty-nine property inspections have been conducted and twenty-four violation notices have been issued. Herr Van Cauze, 635 Taylor Avenue, characterized proposed certificates of occupancy presently in the Health and Safety Committee as an overly broad and unfriendly to business. Jeff Norman, 219 South Sandusky Avenue and Norman Hill, 610 South Walnut Street, spoke in favor of the city allowing outdoor seating in the downtown business district. Clarification was sought on what the next steps are for council on this issue. Law Director Rob Ratliff said outdoor seating in the district was allowed as a conditional use with the passage of ordinance number 9-2017 in February and that the council can establish guidelines for that use if it chooses. Council can take up the issue of outdoor consumption of alcohol in the district through the institution of a downtown outdoor refreshment area or by allowing the delineation of specific areas in the public right-of-way for said consumption. Allowing retail displays in the public right-of-way in the district may also be considered.
Okay, order of committee business, public lands and buildings, Mr. Wireball?
Public lands and buildings. Again, at 6:44 PM, members Mark McKiever, Monica Sack, Bruce Trucca, and myself. We were all present. Water tower proposal, at the April 20th, 2017 Joint Regular Committee Meeting, a representative of Utility Services Corporation, Tip City, Ohio, had given a presentation on the condition of the city's north and east water towers. He had explained that his company's asset management model shifts the risk of maintaining towers from the city to his company. The price structure for the two tanks combined would range from $152,000 annually from 2017 through 2021, down to $66,000 to $75,000 annually after that. City Service Director Jeff Wagner said the city is going to look for a second estimate. He said water tower maintenance has basically cost the city about $250,000 every three to four years. The opinion was expressed by a member of the public that tower maintenance contracts wasteful. The matter was tabled. Wireball recessed the Public Lands and Building Committee at 6:40 PM.
Questions or comments for Mr. Wireball? Okay, moving on. Plating Committee, Mr. Piper?
Plating Committee met Thursday, May 4th at 6:40 PM. Members present were Mark McKiever, Bill O'Rourke, and myself. Item number one, 1215 Hopley Avenue zoning amendment request. Amendment would redistrict following parcels per request of MMB Development LLC. and 080017706.000, 1215 Hopley Avenue, urban neighborhood residential to limited commercial industrial. O'Rourke made a motion requesting draft legislation making the proposed amendment with the second by McKiever. Motion passed by voice vote. Voice vote. Public hearing was scheduled for 4:30 PM, March 12th, 2017. Draft legislation will be posted in zoning office beginning May 12th, 2017. Letters will be postmarked to nineteen property owners notifying them with a public hearing in the late of May 12th. I guess that's posted.
2017, no.
Item number two, Hopley, Whatstone Alley Vacation Request. MMB Development LLC requested the vacation of an alley in the area of Whatstone Street and Hopley Avenue running north-south between End Lots to the west, 2387, 2386, and 2385, and lots to the east, 2384. MMB Development also requested the vacation of an alley beginning at Whatstone Street running east-west between End Lots to the north, 2378, 2379, 2380, 2381, 2382, and 2383, and End Lots to the south, 2384 and 2387. O'Rourke made a motion requesting two pieces of legislation allowing for the two alley vacations with second by McKiever. Motion passed by voice vote. Fireball recessed the plating committee at 6:49 PM.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Piper regarding the minute? None? Okay, moving on to Health and Safety Committee, Mr. Piper?
Again, Health and Safety Committee met at 6:49 PM. Members present were Mark McKiever, Bill O'Rourke, and myself. Just like the rest of them. Item number one, liquor permit request. LCN, Desires LLC doing business as Traveler's Tap House, 240. Two, North Sandusky Avenue has requested a liquor permit as a new business. Police chief has no issues with this request. He made a motion not to request a hearing with the second by O'Rourke. Motion passed by voice vote. The matter now goes before the full council. Item number two, medical marijuana. Law Director Rob Ratliff explained that the state is in the process of drafting rules for licensing, cultivation, and dispensing of medical marijuana and that municipalities can adopt standards to either allow these activities, allow them with restrictions, or abandon them. It was noted that medical marijuana remains a violation of federal law, although Ratliff said the law hasn't been enforced. Two people in the audience spoke against allowing medical marijuana activities in the city and two spoke in favor of it. After a lengthy discussion, the matter was stable. Item number three, outdoor consumption of alcohol downtown business district. It was noted that the American Utilities Act does not require the entire length of the sidewalk to be wide enough for a wheelchair to turn around, only every 100 feet. Council President Sislo said allowing retail sales in the public right-of-way Ivy sidewalks in the downtown business district would necessitate adding it as a conditional use in section 1175.03 of the city zoning code. Ratliff recommended council would be making it a permitted use with restrictions instead so each business would have to apply through the Board of Zoning Appeals. He made a motion to refer to the plating committee allowing retail sales in the public right-of-way in the downtown business district as a permitted use with certain restrictions in the city zoning code with the second by O'Rourke. Motion passed by voice vote. Regarding allowing alcohol consumption in the public right-of-way in the downtown business district, concerns were expressed that a downtown outdoor refreshment area would be too broad. He made a motion to send the issue to the plating committee with the second by O'Rourke. Motion passed by voice vote. Special plating committee was scheduled for 1:00 PM on May 9th. On May 8th, the time was changed to 2:30 PM. And then I recessed the Health and Safety Committee at 8:00 or 7:00 PM.
Questions or comments for Mr. Piper regarding the Health and Safety Committee minutes? Mr. O'Rourke?
I have one, I'm awaiting your presence, the other. You got a next to me?
Yes, there's another, the plating committee?
Yeah.
Special plating committee?
It's really not to him, but I have a separate question.
Okay, well, we're off with them?
Here, I'll finish this out. Piper asked for a motion to adjourn the Joint Regular Committees, motions by McKiever, Sislo, Seth, to adjourn at 8:00 PM. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to not request a hearing for Traveler's Tap House with the Ohio Department of Liquor Control.
So moved. Playback.
Mr. Piper, motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. O'Rourke, to not request a hearing for the Traveler's Tap House. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. The plating committee met in a special session on Tuesday, May the 9th at 2:34 PM. Mr. Piper?
I'm on the roll.
You are on the roll?
Yes, at 2:34 PM, that is correct. Members present were Mark McKiever, Bill O'Rourke, and myself, again. Special plating committee meeting was called by Mark McKiever, Bill O'Rourke, and Steve Piper. The purpose of this special meeting was to continue discussions on retail and dining slash alcohol sales in the public right-of-ways in the downtown business district. This meeting was held in council chambers. Item number one, retail displays in the public right-of-way. Committee discussed the establishment of several guidelines for adding retail sales as permitted using the public right-of-way specifically the sidewalks in the downtown business district. Chapter 1175.02, certified ordinances would be amended to include the guidelines. As mine discussions included, displays, retail displays will be allowed during regular business hours and the business is responsible for cleaning up, carrying, loading machines will be allowed. Insurance, this must have proof of liability insurance in the amount of $1 million with the city listed as additional insured. Dimensions, retail displays can occupy up to six feet of sidewalk from the front of the building and even at least four feet from pedestrian traffic. benches and planners, if a business wishes to have a bench in front of its building, it can purchase them at cost to the city. Flower planners will be a permitted use, but permanent planners must be evaluated by the Board of Zoning Appeals. He made a motion to have law director draw up your draft ordinance or draft amendment to chapter 1175.02 of the certified ordinances incorporating the above guidelines with second by O'Rourke. Law Director will have the draft available for the plating committee to review at its next meeting on May 18th. Item number two, dining and alcohol sales. Item number two, dining and alcohol sales in the public right-of-way. Committee discussed the establishment of several guidelines for adding dining and alcohol sales as conditional use in the public right-of-way, specifically the sidewalks in the downtown business district. Chapter eleven seventy-five point zero three, the codified ordinances would be amended to include the guidelines. One member of the public spoke against the proposal. Guideline discussions included. Furniture. Tables, chairs, and other items must be secured and businesses responsible for cleaning up the area and vending machines will be allowed. Insurance, same as the others. Dimensions. Tables, chairs, and other items can occupy up to six feet of sidewalk from the front of the building and even at least four feet for pedestrian traffic. benches and planters, same as the other. Fencing. Currently fencing in the downtown business district is mentioned in the city zoning code only in relation to private property. State requires fencing for alcohol sales in the public right-of-way, but not for dining only, which suggests that data electrified fence should be permitted. Fees. Administrative fee for granting of a conditional use will discuss as well as not having a fee. Currently, a zoning amendment request carries a twenty-five dollar fee while a carrying for code, board zoning appeals carries a forty dollar fee. Enforcement. Requests for conditional use permit will be considered by the board zoning appeals. City prosecutor will have the authority to initiate an action to terminate the permit with the board. Times of operation. Outdoor dining not including alcohol sales will be permitted from April first through October thirty-first during regular business hours. Outdoor alcohol sales will be permitted from April first through October thirty-first, no earlier than ten a.m. or later than nine P.M., with an outdoor consumption cutoff of ten P.M. There will be no Sunday alcohol sales. Either outdoor dining nor outdoor alcohol sales will be permitted with traffic patterns on Sandusky Avenue or altered for special events such as travelers' special orders by security. He made a motion to have law director draw up either a draft ordinance or a draft amendment to chapter eleven seventy-five point zero three, the codified ordinances incorporating the above guidelines with the second by O'Worke. Law Director will have the draft available for the plating committee to review at its next meeting on May eighteenth. O'Worke made a motion to adjourn, seconded by McKeever. Motion passed by voice vote. That matters with the appeal.
Now, Mr. O'Worke, questions?
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, sir.
Um, I just thought of a couple of stuff. In both these meetings, it talks about public right-of-way.
Yes.
Uh, I've heard statements, the state doesn't care what we do at the public right-of-way. Um, I haven't seen anything in writing. We need something in writing.
From the state with respect to their right-of-way, their Route Four right-of-way?
Yes.
We can inquire or vote on if they have any issues with it.
Well, I mean, if you call up, they'll say, no, they have issues, but we don't have anything in writing saying that we can do that.
Sure, we can request something.
Go ahead, go ahead, let.
I will add it to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments regarding the minutes from the special plating committee meeting? It's all going to be back in committee Thursday evening, so that was just the first run-through that took a mere two and a half hours to do. No other questions? Moving on, then. Traffic Commission, Mayor Reeser?
Thank you, Madam President. The Traffic Commission met Monday, May eighth, two thousand seventeen, at one P.M. Present were myself, Mr. Wagner, Chief Keppke, and Acting Fire Chief Chad Swimley. Keppke made a motion, seconded by Wagner, to approve the minutes from the April twenty-first, two thousand seventeen Traffic Commission meeting, and the motion passed. Our order of business with Wise Street Alley, ninety-day trial. Barbara Pritchard, the six-one-six Virginia Avenue, spoke to the commission about not changing the traffic pattern by creating a dead end for both Wise and Kayler. Several of the residents of the area around Kayler, Wise, and Virginia spoke of the alley and expressed that they liked the traffic pattern they've been in Kayler and Wise. Chief Keppke thanked the residents for attending the Traffic Commission meeting and for their input. He wants all neighbors and the city to be working together to solve the issue with the alley. Keppke explained that he would like to prevent something worse from happening that has already happened, for example, logs, the rocks, steak knives being put in the alley by Mr. Johnson. Law Director Rob Ratliff elaborated that Mr. Johnson has other charges pending in municipal court which have had many pre-trials, and Mr. Johnson is on probation from other charges. The city is only able to charge Mr. Johnson with misdemeanor crimes. Keppke added that the neighbors could file restraining orders if they felt threatened. To help eliminate the acute angle for turning, an easement could be granted to allow for an easier turn at the alley. The alley should be delineated. Wagner will look into the cost of paving the alley from Wise to Kayler. Wagner made a motion, seconded by Keppke, to withdraw the ninety-day trial in the Wise Street Alley. Motion passed. Wagner added that no letters will be sent to area residents, no barrier will be placed in the alley, and no dead-end signs will be added. The next meeting will be on Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, at one P.M. in council chambers to discuss the southeast street parking issue. Ninety-day trial had been voted on banning the parking of one hundred to four hundred blocks of southeast street on April twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. Swimley made a motion, seconded by Keppke, to adjourn at one P.M., and the motion passed.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding the... Mr. O'Worke?
Um, I was at the meeting, and in relation to the alley between Kayler and Wise, that third and fourth class panel paragraph said to help eliminate the acute angle for turning, an easement could be granted. If I understand, it's already been granted?
It's already been granted, yes.
You may want to take these minutes, send back to your Traffic Commission, and get them amended. Any other questions or comments for the Traffic Commission? Okay, I need a motion then to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
Some who...
As amended?
As amended.
As amended, yes, some.
Second.
Who said second?
Second by me.
Motion by Mr. Piper, or Mr. McKeever, and seconded by Mr. Piper, to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We have a report of city officers, starting with the mayor, Mr. Reeser.
Thank you again, Madam President. National Air Force Service was held last, actually, Thursday. We do a Thursday. Here at the city hall, as well attended. Thanks to Uyrsiris Municipal Association for organizing the event. Mr. Ratliff, Mr. Wagner, myself attended the Ohio Municipal League Safety Director Conference at Hilliard. Medical marijuana law was a major topic of discussion. Want to comment on all the kids in the parks, the Harling Park, even Lyons Park and Allmiller Park. Huge soccer program again, little aid programs, it's full. And, I mean, thanks to the volunteers who've made this all possible. And also, I might add, the city workers who keep the parks looking in such good shape. Congressman Jordan was in town last week. Keep some close contact whenever he's on break with Uyrsiris. I spent the day with several area businesses and elected officials. Went to Rotary, spoke to Rotary. It was a good day. Finally, I'd like to remind all residents to have respect for safety forces. We respect that they're deserved. It's been a rough week for police forces. Sheriff's deputy was shot and wounded at Tippin last week. I said, glad on the Tippin paper that he just got out of the hospital today. Terrible tragedy also of Kirkersville, last week where the police chief was killed, he was actually ambushed. These hit very close to home. Remember that our safety forces put their lives on the line every day when they put the uniform on, and we thank them for their bravery. Takes a special set of quality to be a police officer in modern times. It's kind of a mix of humility, patience, strength, courage, you know, and then intelligence, insight, and instinct. So, next time you see a member of our safety forces, please thank them, and like we do Jason tonight, thank you for all you do for us, and ask you to keep your safety in your prayers. And finally, before I close up, you know, we'll miss Wanda. I want to thank her for all she's done for the city, serving on the council, and welcome Dan, and look forward to working with him. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Questions for the mayor this evening? Mr. O'Worke?
Earlier days, since it's so nice, I took a break from my hectic schedule and played a couple of golf. I love golfing. I occasionally talk to the groundskeeper attendant at the golf course, and he brought up a couple of things. One has to do with the, when they paved last year, the entrance to their maintenance shed, which is far east end of the property, is very rough, and they would like to know if somebody could come out and patch it up with asphalt or something so it would be more accessible.
Is it on the golf course property?
No, so when they paved the road last year.
Okay.
So.
It's downstairs, Dr. Britton's office.
Okay. I can come and have a look at that.
I have a dude that has to do with, when you play where I do, you get to see the river quite a bit, and there's some huge logs. They're number ten, and number thirteen, and fourteen, and I asked the maintenance superintendent if they like them there, or they put them there, and they said no. They'd like to get them removed. So I don't know if you could...
We took a hate gun that way about a year ago, I noticed them too. I believe that's, you know, something under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers. I have to, you know, consult with the owner, and we briefly talked about that, but, yeah, so...
It's pretty bad.
Yeah, there's more down the way to some large ones, so... I'll follow up with I can answer for you.
Thank you.
And good luck with your hook and slice, whatever.
Any other questions or comments for the mayor? I guess I do have to comment about Allmiller Park. Those wild hyacinths that were out there in that wind field over by the Friendship Ridge, that was absolutely just amazing this week, and it's so nice that we don't mow it until they all calm down.
Well, it almost got mowed.
[laughing]
We have had a new person attempt to help us understart it, and didn't get the memo, and fortunately, one of the residents, we kind of jumped on the mower with maybe, I don't know, but stopped him, and it really gave him a talking to.
Yeah, it was beautiful.
Yeah, so, so, they are beautiful. If you haven't been out to Allmiller Park, it is beautiful. And we'll mow those after they go to see you here in a week or so, just in case anybody doesn't like the flowers, to keep the ticks going.
Yes. We have no report this evening from the Service Safety Director, Law Director, and Mr. Alage.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I have a written report tonight that did tender the court stats this week as well, so, that's all I have.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the law director this evening?
We have the date two years ago.
I would say it is. The date at the top? Was that a good year? It shouldn't say. Thank you. No questions for the law director? And moving on. Auditor, Mrs. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President. I have no report and no reports tonight.
You have been quiet as of course.
I have. You know, I'll make up a little on these days.
I know that. I need, we have the auditor statement in cash position dated April the thirtieth. It was given to you at last meeting. I need a motion to accept and file that report.
Second.
Motion by Miss Sax, seconded by Mr. McKeever, to accept and file the auditor statement in cash position dated April the thirtieth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We have no report from the police chief nor the fire chief. We need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Piper, seconded by Mrs. Sax, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is the time where we have visitor's input regarding reports of standing in or special committees and of city officers. If anyone would like to address council, we ask you, please, to step to the podium. Anyone to address council this evening? None?
Just an ask question. These are all the reports that was given today.
Please step forward in your name and address, please.
Are you asking, I'm Barbara Pritchard, six-sixteen Virginia Avenue, and it's about your minutes? Is that, can I address that?
Yes.
Okay. And those minutes, I see that, or I heard that you didn't have, or there was a special funding maybe, or funding on that to, laptop?
That they were going to check into it?
Yes, they were going to check into it. Let me tell you, I talked to Mr. Wagner yesterday, because I probably had a meeting yesterday at one o'clock, and I showed up, and we didn't have any, it was on the other alley, of the street, East Street Parking. So I talked to Jeff Wagner, and Jeff, I don't remember who it is, and he feels that, he hasn't got no estimates on the laptop, but he feels that it costs too much for the laptop. So they want to put a piece of cement slab, some kind of slab in where Mr. Johnson parks where the alley is, just so many feet, and so many feet wide. So it kind of threw me off, because I thought, I thought we were going to get estimates and bring it back, and now just talk about a piece of slab, just like putting the markers in on the cement, and how long is it going to take to have that removed? So, you know, it's kind of, I thought, I thought we were just going to get estimates and stuff and bring it back and kind of talk about it, and now we're talking about a piece of cement slab.
Well, that should be coming up again in your Traffic Commission, correct? As to what you're going to do?
Yeah, we have, we didn't make any promises. We said we'd look into it, whatever it costs, yeah. And, you know, there's things that we have to take into account, paving that alley and the cost of it, but now we're talking about, you know, storm retention, like the water then going into these folks' yards that wasn't going in there before, so there's things that have to be examined. Also, if, you know, the cost of all of the other alleys that might need paved, so we were not, we're not sure what we're going to do with that, so...
But you're not going to go back on the motion? I mean, you guys aren't going to go back on the motion, because kind of, when I left here the other day, I think, I think a lot of us left here with good feelings the other day, that we were going to kind of take this and rest it, you know, and that I thought there was a special funding for it. I know it had to be brought up and stuff, so why would even, Wagner tell me that now, not even getting an estimate, that he thinks it's going to be too costly, he's just going to think about putting a piece of cement slab there?
Well, we're just exploring our options right now. No, we're not going back on the motion.
Well, I hope not.
No, we're not. We just don't, there was no motion to pave, you know, we only...
No, I know that there was no motion to pave that, but I said...
We were going to investigate the possibility of it.
When you, when you guys blacktop, you weren't probably here when they start blacktop in the alley as mayor, but when they start blacktop and that, they had to go through that with all the rest of them. You know, I just hope that we don't have a setback or go back. I hope it moves forward, and I just, and if you guys are going to...
What are you asking that's moving forward?
I just mean to move forward, don't go back, and we're going to be forward.
Forward with what?
Well, just move forward with our issue here, just not to make it any worse, is what I'm saying. If we're going to put a piece of slab in there, put a piece of slab in there.
Your issue was that we don't block up the alley, and we settled it, so...
But we had other discussion there, is what I'm saying, that you didn't have in your minutes, is what I'm saying.
But I thought we satisfied what you wanted to see.
I thought you didn't, I feel what you did too, but I said, when I talked to Mr. Wagner, he kind of threw me off by a piece of slab cement, and didn't Mr. Johnson have cement removed out of the ground?
I don't, I don't know.
You don't know?
Oh, you're talking about the marks?
Yes.
Yeah, that's different than, that's different, though.
For the city property.
But we're talking about paving the alley. So we've got all those things to take into account on our budget.
But you know, I understand that, and this is the way I feel about how you feel. I don't think that you like it, because we want to keep it open. That's my opinion with you, because I've heard you comment to me twice on, I hope that nobody gets hurt. And the one time you commented to me in the Traffic Committee, you told me, you know, that I wouldn't be traveling that alley. And I said, how would you like it if you're right? Now, this goes back to over a year, twenty fifteen, I think, is when it was back.
Yeah, I don't...
And that was when I both talked about, when we left here the other day, the comment we made was, I hope nobody gets hurt. You made it to me, and there was a few other... You made it to me, and it was a few other.
I don't remember me, if I did, you know, I hope nobody, yeah, I hope nobody does get hurt.
Well, I hope so too. It's a wonder they have God waiting for this here.
But, so you're asking us to, what your point is, you want us to follow up with the possibility of paving the alley?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so we're following up, so.
Well, that's why I come up today, because I come to the meeting and I felt we had a meeting, which I was wrong about it. But I will be, I want to be at the next traffic committee, I want to be at any meeting that you guys have any talk on this alley.
Well, we, you've noticed so much too. Jitter City website.
Sorry, you know, this is the way you make me feel, so I mean, I have the right to say how you make, and you make me feel that way.
I'm sorry.
I mean, you can't even acknowledge me when you come, you couldn't say even hi when you come back here. And when you do that, when you see people, I think there's some kind of guilt or something there, I'm sorry, so.
Oh, a delayed hello. Okay, thanks for coming.
Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Aror?
If I read my calendar right, Mr. Pritchard, I think the next traffic commission is one o'clock on June second.
Thank you.
Friday.
June second?
Yeah, Friday.
One o'clock.
Name and address, please.
Kurt Hank Highland, six three five, Cam. I just wanted to ask the mayor a question, because I heard somebody say this, that in, in the past, that the city was not going to pave any more alleys because it was creating more stormwater runoff. Do you, do you know anything about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't like anything about that.
I wanted to point out that you just said that there was a concern of paving the alley causing a stormwater runoff in people's yards. So, are you saying that gravel creates less stormwater runoff than blacktop?
Yeah, I think that's a fair.
Because I think that the city charges for stormwater runoff the same rate if your property is gravel versus blacktop. So, does that mean that if we have the gravel, maybe we should be getting a reduction versus if it was all blacktop?
It depends on whether the service has been packed, whether curvaceous or incurvaceous. But we're not talking about city, your personal property, we're talking about alleys. And what we're, the only thing I brought up, Kurt, is, is when we come through there and put asphalt in that alley, and we create floods in everybody's yards, you know, then we're going to have a whole other.
But if it's compacted because it's a drivable alley, the water's going to run off anyway, according to what you just said, so why would that even be an argument?
Not necessarily. I haven't driven that alley for the last couple of weeks, but if I remember, there's grass coming through there. Isn't there, in that alley?
No.
No grass at all?
It's been, it's been stowed.
Well, I'm not an engineer by trade, and so I would have to, I could get an answer for you from our city engineer, in a professional opinion, rather than my, you know, non-professional opinion about water storm.
I agree, I might follow up with you later.
I appreciate you doing that.
Anyone else to address council? Okay, moving on, for consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have two pieces, ordinance number twenty eight, twenty seventeen. Vacation in alley being one hundred and eighteen feet in length and sixteen feet in width in the area of Whitestone Street and Hopely Avenue that runs north and south, for one hundred and eighteen feet and sixteen feet in width between in lots to the west, twenty-three eighty-seven, twenty-three eighty-six, and twenty-three eighty-five, and parcel to the east, twenty-three eighty-four. That is referred back to the Plating Committee. Ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty seventeen. Vacation in alley being three hundred and forty-six feet in length and eighteen, sixteen feet in width, beginning at Whitestone Street between in lots to the north, twenty-three seventy-eight, twenty-three seventy-nine, twenty-three eighty, twenty-three eighty-one, twenty-three eighty-two, twenty-three eighty-three, and in lots to the south, twenty-three eighty-seven, twenty-three eighty-four. That's also referred to the Plating Committee.
Okay, this is for the property right there by where the old Posey's restaurant used to be, on the corner of Hopely and Whitestone. I need a motion to accept this as the first reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, seconded by Mr. McKeever, to accept this as the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty seventeen is referred back to Plating. Ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty seventeen is referred back to Plating. This is the time where we have public participation. Any member of the general public may reset their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone want to address council this evening? None? I don't think we need to recess this evening. Okay, the committee reports on pending legislation. Plating?
Plating Committee is favorable, ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty seventeen, which is alley vacation number one. And Plating is favorable, ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty seventeen, which is alley vacation number two.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept this report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance, number twenty-eight dash twenty seventeen, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the readings of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Aror?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Aror?
Yeah.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wireball?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty seventeen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty seventeen, which is the second alley vacation, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved.
Second.
Piper?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Aror?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty seventeen?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Aror?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty seventeen is duly adopted. Thank you very much. Under old business, Bruce Brandstetter, Brandstetter Carroll, our engineering services, will be here on Thursday to discuss all the projects that are going on in the city. Well, the party isn't torn up. But he will be here to give us an update on what is going on at the beginning of the committee meetings on Thursday evening. Does anyone else have any old business they'd like to bring up?
Madam President, we need to request a special committee meeting for health and safety to discuss our EMS and twenty ambulance district contract agreements.
Okay, and from health and safety. Who's helping Steve, is that you, Mr. Piper?
That was correct.
We need to put this into committee and then we're going to have a special meeting outside of the normal meetings on Thursday?
I believe it's already in committee, so we just need to request a.
A special meeting?
Yes.
Okay, date and time?
Why a special meeting?
Mr. Radler?
Why a special meeting?
Well, if you went to it Thursday, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
We're just going to hold off, because it's probably going to be a lengthy discussion.
It'll be fine.
Okay.
I'll be here until ten thirty.
Okay. Be discussed as a regular meeting then? Any other old business that will be brought up this evening? Moving on to new miscellaneous business. Before you, you have, with the addition of a new council member, we have to make some changes in our committee assignments. And looking at who was on what committee and the committees that Mrs. Sherrick was on, I'm submitting to council that Ms. Sack be removed from Chair of the Economic Development Committee and left as a member on that committee. That Mr. McKeever from Member of Economic Development to Chair of Economic Development. Ms. Sack to Chair the Plating Committee, replacing Ms. Sherrick. Mr. Ross to be a Member of Service, replacing Ms. Sherrick. And Mr. Ross to be a Member of Health and Safety Committee, replacing Ms. Sherrick. That sort of moves some of our senior people into the chairmanships of the different committees and balances them out by moving Mr. McKeever up to Chairman of the Economic Development. Do we actually need a motion to accept these committee changes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, seconded by Mr. McKeever, to accept these committee changes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you. We also have some other changes that we need to make. These are our subcommittee assignments. It's about, go back to about three pages in that little packet that you have in front of you. Back to the appointments of subcommittee relating to council on the second page of that. The Flood Plan Appeals Board. Mrs. Sherrick sat on that board. This appointment is only through the end of this year. By the way, all these committee assignments are only through the end of the year. But since Ms. Sack will be taking over as Chairman of the Plating Committee, to move her to that position, and then also over for the community reinvestment area, the CRA Housing Council. Ms. Sherrick was on that one and proposing to change that out with Mr. Wireball. That's effective through the end of this year too. They rarely ever meet. Plating case something's up, and we have to, so we need the approval of those two changes to our subcommittee.
I make a motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. McKeever. Second?
Second.
By Ms. Sack. All those in favor making the subcommittee changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. That will get the board back here updated. Reminder that May the twenty-fifth is the last day of school for U.Sires City Schools. The twenty-ninth is Memorial Day and all the city offices will be closed. June the second, first Fridays begin from five to eight P M. downtown with F.C. Bank and Fitness Warehouse, five K run and walk from six-thirty to eight P M. That only costs fifteen dollars if you want to get involved in that. You can call four one nine, five six two, seven zero, four zero. June third is the barbecue benefit and concert on the Green, United in Harmony, Woodlong United Methodist Church at sixteen seventy-five Hopely Avenue at five P M. Ten dollar donation is aiding out for recoveries, twelve step program. That's only, this is like their third year, I think, to do this. A very, very nice event, they raise good money for this, for the cause. On June tenth is Cruising with the Cops, custom and classic car show from two to eleven. And that's sneaking up on us really, really quickly. Anyone else with any new business this evening? None? We're all here this evening? The joint regular committee meeting is all referrals from this council meeting and any open project list items may be discussed during the committee meetings. Referrals from this meeting are.
We just have one referral, that is the tax incentive review council recommendations. That was from council that goes to economic development. And we have, as of now, three items on the agenda that are already in committee. One for plating, which is the retail sales and now Danny and Paul's sales and the public right of way and the downtown businesses, that's implied. And two in health and safety, at the request of Chief Kepke, junk vehicle enforcement, and the ambulance service contract.
Okay, the next WBCO radio program is on Friday, June the ninth, and they're going to be taping it ahead of time on Tuesday, June the sixth. So it can be scheduled anytime during the day for somebody to be able to show up and do the radio show. That is shaking now, listening. Is there anyone that would like to do the taping, the radio, for the radio on Tuesday, June the sixth? We'll find somebody, okay? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second was Mr. Piper. Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Piper, to adjourn, the time is eight oh seven P M. We are adjourned.